Does this mean in order? Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thurity and justice for all.
Power off, power down?
No, Haley, you have a presentation, so leave it on, Craig. Sorry.
Leaving it on. Ms. Shepard?
Glad I wasn't quick on the button.
All right, any changes to the agenda?
Council received a revised agenda with the new item G on the original agenda. The outdoor tenant permits associated with fire relief plans, there was additional information, or incorrect information as originally provided, it's been rescheduled for our next meeting. Otherwise, the agenda was presented.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Bryce. Second by Nobak. All in favor?
Aye.
Presentation. Employee recognition. So is this my show?
This is your show, Joe.
I just get to do this? This is fun. We have a lot of important people to recognize. First, Stephanie Frederickson. Stephanie started with the city of Elka New Market in June of 2010. It's one of the longest-serving administrative staff members. Stephanie serves as the face of the city through her interactions at the front counter and utility billings. She has the primary responsibility of the city's utility billing and account maintenance, the newsletters and website. The city of Elka New Market recognizes Stephanie for 10 years of dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city. All right. Move to Brad Simon. Brad Simon has served as a firefighter for over 10 years. Brad started with the fire department in July of 2009. He is serving his fellow firefighters as a first responder since joining the fire department. The city of Elka New Market recognizes Brad for his decade of dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fire district. Thomas Humphrey. Tom has served on the Planning Commission since August of 2018. He was vice chair of the Planning Commission from November 27, 2018, to January 8, 2021. Tom continued serving the city as an election judge since 2010 and was the head election judge for many elections. The city of Elka New Market recognizes Tom for his dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city. You talking for Zellie?
I sure am.
Okay, Tom's gonna get the picture. Absolutely. Nice.
Thank you. Thanks to all you fantastic people, I have a little speech I was gonna have.
Can you do it in 10 to 15 minutes?
We'll keep it under 15. Ronald Reagan's once said that terrifying words in the English language were "from the government" and "I'm here to help." And I've gotta tell you, the group that I've encountered here, living in this municipality since 2000, is just utterly fantastic. Tom Terry, dealt with him a lot, Sandy Green before, and then Linda now. Fantastic work that the community development group does, Haley and Renee. And by the way, I was ready to raise my hand, you know, to try to get you in the direction that you went, but thank God. But, and I just hope that the people of this municipality understand the value that they give from the public servants that we have here, both collective and staff. And that they're here to make their life really good, and that's what it is. So thank you very much.
Well said.
Thank you.
Set a high bar.
Kevin Stewart. Kevin has served as a firefighter for over 20 years. Kevin started with the fire department in January of 2000. He's serving his fellow firefighters as captain and as emergency medical technician since 2004. The city of Elka New Market recognizes Kevin for his two decades of dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fires. And last but not least, Officer Bell.
Stand.
Brady, you wanna do this? Do you wanna read?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. I know how much you love the spotlight, however. Officer Craig Bell has worked for the city-
You should make him stand though.
You know, whatever you're most comfortable with. Officer Craig Bell has worked for the city of Elka New Market since 2010. Officer Bell was the first full-time police officer hired after the city's adoption of the current community values-based policing philosophy and the longest-serving full-time police officer in the history of the department. He has been instrumental building the foundation of the department's culture of community-first policing. Craig has been, excuse me, Craig has been the field training officer for every officer and chief this department has hired after him. At the end of 2018 and early 2019, Officer Bell also served as interim police chief prior to hiring Chief Jewell. He is also a certified emergency management director and completed the BCA's Supervisor and Leadership Course. The city of Elka New Market recognizes Craig for his dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city. Promised myself I wouldn't cry. You guys can get closer. Nice, to be able to follow that awesome speech.
It's been a hell of a ride.
All right. All right, very glad it concludes our presentations. So- Thank you, gentlemen. On the public comment. Does anyone like to address the council, Commissioner Wolf? Welcome.
Good, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody. Tom Wolf, Scott County Commissioner. Just a couple of things going on at the county. We're talking about these flavored E-cigs and maybe limiting the purchasing of them for young kids. It's, they're very addictive, they apparently smell and taste great, and they start to lead to other things, so we're looking at that. We also had a high-level workshop on legalizing marijuana. And so, I think we've nobody got that, anyhow. High level, okay. Sorry. I don't get paid to be a comedian. Anyhow. The, you know, it sounds like it's probably gonna somehow get passed through the legislature sooner or later. And our county attorney does not want it to get passed, you know, it comes with lots more problems. It's actually for every dollar of revenue they get off those deals, it's like $6 of expense through, you know, because people start to abuse them as gateway to like doing another drug or something, then they end up in jail and they gotta go through corporate. It's like, you think, oh boy, look at all the money you'd get from, you know, this dollar here, but, you know, it's kind of a bad deal. But, so, you know, it's almost like the seatbelt law in 89, I believe it was, they made the seatbelt law, no seatbelt, or you have to wear a seatbelt, no fine. Then the next year, well, we better put 10 bucks on that. How much is it today?
Hundred and ten.
Is it? Okay. So, and then there's some points on your insurance too, I believe, or some, I can't remember, but from what I'm hearing from post afar. So it's, you know, once they open up and once they get that in here, they'll keep opening the door a little bit more and more, so we've all seen that. So anyhow, so we'll see what happens with that. And then, since I've been here, last credit, River had their election and they elected four of the same folks that were supervisors, and then one new guy, Andrew Stevens, to be on their credit river city council. So, they meet twice a week and they're doing pretty good. They're getting some interest in some land on 21 and 27 there to develop. And so, you know, things are turning there. So, any questions?
Speaker, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that cares to speak under public comment? Anything that's not on the agenda? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, move on to consent agendas. Is there- Does anyone have any items they want pulled from consent or have quick questions on? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Bryce.
Second.
Second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll jump into general business. Dakota Acres Second Edition.
Council will note that associated with this item tonight, there are really two separate items that we'll be discussing. I'd like to introduce to you tonight, or just make sure that you are aware that we have representative of the current property owner, Global Properties. Roland Kelly-Ensmar here is a representative, current property owner, as well as investors in the proposed apartment project. And Dave Schmuleski, who is the applicant who has submitted the amendment for conditional use permit and the TIP application on behalf of this project. So Haley and I are going to take a team, Haley is gonna describe the conditional use permit application request for the amendment, and then I'll take over and make the TIP application.
Alrighty, so you all may remember this project, which received its original approvals in 2019. Specifically, it was approved for preliminary and final plat, a variance and a conditional use permit. As I stated, this was reviewed in 2019 by both the Planning Commission and then ultimately, of course, approved by the council. Since these approvals were granted, an extension of the approvals until November 21, 2021 was also approved. So just for a reminder, this is a project that is located near the existing townhomes at the intersection of Dakota Avenue and James Parkway, and it is a multifamily housing project. Also, as Renee stated, there was a land use request specifically to amend the conditional use permit number C1-2019 that was previously issued to allow additional building height. And then also submitted was a request for business subsidy specifically tax increment financing. So the original proposal was a single lot on 3.19 acres. It included two buildings totaling 68 units to be completed in two separate phases. And then you can see here, and included in the packet is a concept plan for a revised proposal. Still one lot, 3.19 acres, however, it includes 88 units in a single building. So just some miscellaneous design elements. There's 155 total parking spaces, this meets the requirements of the city code, 84 of which are proposed in a first-floor garage that is underneath the units, with an additional seven detached garage spaces and then 64 surface spaces. There is proposed to be 55% of the site as landscaped area. Our city code requires a minimum of 30, so they far exceed that. And it includes landscape screening from the adjacent townhomes. And then the developer has also identified over 15,000 square feet of open space, both exterior and interior for the residents. So specific to the conditional use permit request in both the original approval and this revised concept plan is the building height. So the city code in our R4 zoning district limits height to 35 feet. The approved proposal in 2019 included an approximate building height of 46 feet, and so a conditional use permit was granted for that. The revised plans as submitted with the request in April, it depicted originally a building height of approximately 52 feet 2 inches. It included a flat roof, which had the majority of the building at just over 42 feet, but then it had parapet gables that increased the height, ranging anywhere from 4 and 1/2 feet to 10 feet. So this is an example or rendering of the building that was submitted with the request to amend the conditional use permit. Again, on here you can see the flat roof of the building with those parapet gables increasing that height. So the request to amend the conditional use permit was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their April meeting. They reviewed both the new concept plan, site design, building elements, and of course, this request for the CUP specifically. A public hearing was held and no comment from residents were received. After discussion, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the request to amend the conditional use permit. And largely, the request or the amendment is required because the original approvals reference specific plans. And so since those plans have changed, it's updating those references and then acknowledging the change in height. The Planning Commission's recommendation was also subject to revising the building plans to include shorter rectangular parapets instead of those triangular ones. So after that recommendation, the developer did submit revised plans on both the building elevation and the rendering, and it depicted a total building height of 43 feet 7 inches, so it was substantially decreased. Still a flat roof with a building height of approximately 42 feet, but instead of that 4 and 1/2 to 10 feet increase in building height, the parapets only add 1 and 1/2 feet. So here is a rendering of the revised building plans based on the Planning Commission recommendation. So also to note, I just wanna comment on the proposed exterior building materials. The city code in the R4 zoning district requires that 25% of all building facade have an exterior finish of brick, stucco, or natural or artificial stone. So the elevations as submitted depicts approximately 28% brick, which is intended to cover that garage level on the first floor. It is a precast panel with brick finish. And then the remaining facade is proposed to be two different types of prefinished steel, both horizontal and vertical. So again, just this rendering that was on the previous slide, you see the brick on the bottom with that prefinished steel changing in color on the unit level fours. And then this is just a closer-up image of the precast brick panels that are proposed for the garage. So with that, I will turn it over to Renee to discuss the TIP request.
Okay, so again, as mentioned, a business subsidy application has been received. The application material that was submitted indicates that the developer is seeking tax increment financing assistance in an amount of approximately $141,000 annually for 15 years, and reduced amount for an additional five years. They've also indicated that the project would not proceed but for the use of TIP. The pro forma indicates a negative rate of return on investment without the use of TIP, and therefore, there would be no investors and no financing. Project construction is proposed beginning in approximately October of this year and with completion by approximately September. We did review at the last meeting, but just a quick overview, what is tax increment financing? It's the ability to capture and use most of the increase in local property tax revenues from new development within a defined geographic area for a defined period of time without the approval of other taxing districts. So TIP involves county, our city, county, and school district portion of the taxes. The city would be making the decision on that. The applicant in the project is Blackstone Estates LLC. This is a newly formed business entity that was formed specifically to own and manage this project. There would be multiple investors, some will be managing partners and some are equity investors. I'll invite Dave to come up and address the city council afterwards. He can speak more to that. But the existing property owner, Global Properties, would be one of the investors in the project. They currently own the land and that would be their equity in the project. The city does have an adopted business assistance policy. If a city is to provide subsidy, they must have an adopted policy. The city did adopt this in 2012. It specifically identifies tools that are in our toolbox for assistance to businesses. Our toolbox allows for TIP, tax abatement, or deferment of city fees. It does require that we require a but-for test that the project wouldn't be feasible but for the use of city assistance. In reading our policy, it is clear the primary objective was job creation or retention. However, it does specifically state that senior or multifamily housing may be considered on a case-by-case basis, and that we must identify the alternative public purpose if it is not job creation. Our policy requires a pay-as-you-go TIP. This is where the developer pays all of the upfront development costs associated with the project, and he's reimbursed twice annually as the increment becomes available through tax distributions. So of course, with this project, housing or job creation isn't the goal. The public purpose really is to provide housing, much of what we described in the work session. Both the city's 2030 housing plan and our draft 2040 housing plan really very specifically identify providing a variety of housing options as goals and opportunities, providing our share of the region's affordable housing units as well. So, and then implementation strategies in both the 2030 and 2040 plan do specifically state that, you know, the city will actively seek private and public developers and in providing these cities' affordable housing needs, and that we will consider the use of TIP in these affordable housing projects. Minnesota statutes does also regulate TIP. There is, the goal for a housing TIP district is really to create affordable housing. This project does qualify as proposed for the housing TIP district. The maximum term allowed under state statute is 26 years. However, the term is set entirely at the discretion of the city council and based entirely on the verified funding gap. One criteria, or the criteria identified in state statute is that either 20% of the units have to be affordable to those earning 50% of the area median income, or 40% of the units have to be affordable to those earning 60% of the area median income. The developer has indicated that their target would be to have 20% of the units at maybe 50% AMI. We have work with the Scott County Assessor's Office to determine what the proposed assessed value would be should the project move forward. The current assessed value of the property, there's two parcels that are valued at $432,000. If this development moves forward, the assessed value would be somewhere between 12 and 1/2 and 14 million, so nearly 30 times what the value of the property is today. Ellers, the city's financial consultant, has completed a review of the application that was submitted, and they have determined that it's substantially complete and includes the information needed to complete the more thorough review process. They have, the application indicates, and Ellers has confirmed with us in verbal conversations, that they believe there is a funding gap that this project would not be feasible without the use of TIP. That they do need to do a more detailed analysis of the pro forma to determine more accurately the gap. As noted, the application indicates, that was submitted in April, indicated the gap would be approximately $141,000 annually for 15 years. The project would generate some, a range of $154,000 to $173,000 annually in increment, so more than the gap that was initially indicated. Market conditions, as we all know, continue to evolve with supply chain, labor costs, and labor supply. So I think that even over the next couple of months, as the project continues to be evaluated, there could be changes in what the gap is of higher or lower. This is a slide from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency that Haley also presented in the work session that just really defines what the income limits are for that 50% area median income and what the associated rent limits are then. So for instance, a single-income household, that 50% AMI would be earning $36,000 a year. So that's, you know, approximately $17.67 an hour. Ranging up to the $52,450 a year, that's about $25 an hour. Well, based on staff's review of the application materials that have been submitted, this is a review of the city's adopted business assistance policy and state statute. It is staff's opinion that we have enough information. Enough information has been provided for the council to consider moving the TIP application to the next step, noting that the proposed project containing 88 multifamily units is consistent with purpose and intent of the conference of plan and the R4 zoning district in which the property is located. The project can be supported by existing municipal utilities, so no new infrastructure will be needed to accommodate this development. The Scott County CDA has identified a need for 124 shallow subsidy units for Elka New Market between 2016 and 2040. The project would provide workforce housing, which is not currently available in the community and has been identified as a goal in the city's conference of plan. The application submitted contains the basic information needed to complete a TIP evaluation, and the application as submitted does indicate a financing gap indicating the project would not be feasible, financially feasible, or move forward with the use of TIP. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dave to address the city council and give a little background, and then take questions from the council.
Welcome.
Thank you. Should I stand over here?
You're free, I have your excuse.
Words.
See everybody. Dave Schmuleski, the Blackwell Development Mayor and councilors, thank you for having me today. It's kinda hard for me to talk about myself because I'm not that kind of person. I'd rather answer questions if that's okay, but just briefly, just the reason we're here is because of the Ensmers. They have this property, and they were trying to find solutions for cost challenges that they had. And so they reached out to Dianic Homes, who I work with, they're the largest and the oldest modular manufacturing company in the upper Midwest. They have big shoulders, and they have historically constructed single-family homes. They have big shoulders and they have historically constructed, single-family homes. They have leadership that's very intelligent and they see where things are going and we have completely worked on redesigning the way things are done with multifamily. So we've deployed some projects already that are very successful. The quality of the modular construction compared to stick-built, and I've done both, I've been in construction for, I hate to say it, but what is it now, probably almost 30 years, and there's no comparison. These things are constructed, the transported, we can transport mods that are 15 foot 9 inches wide by 64 feet long and they have a lot of engineering into them. So you get a better quality product, a better price, and a greater speed of deployment. So that's, that's kind of why we're here and what we're trying to accomplish in. So the Gansbers have been working in this area for some time, identified this parcel. We are looking for projects and so I think that's how we arrived here.
And you currently have a similar project under construction in Lindstrom?
Yes, we have an 84 unit under construction in Lindstrom, Minnesota.
How many? Eighty-four?
Eighty-four. It's a 16-acre parcel and we ended up, it's between two lakes, so we're in a shoreline district, which is another layer of zoning. So we were only able to construct 84 units in a particular spot on the property. We ended up saving seven acres of woodland and wetlands in the back where the residents can use that as sort of a private park. It's a pretty cool project. So that's currently underway.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
You did a good job.
The only thing I would add is that we are market rate developers. There are some things that came up earlier. We do not, we also self-manage. So we have a stake in the deals that we're in. We have a lot of skin in the game. And we currently do not take Section 8 vouchers, that was brought up, and we made a decision to not do that because we were averaging about $4,500 in damage per unit. So that doesn't mean it's going to be like that in every community. That's just our experience. So I'm not speaking to anybody else except for my own experience with that. So we decided to try to stick with the market rate developments and with everything going on right now and where I think it was clearly talked about where we kind of need to be with rents to actually make them affordable for people. You know, I don't think we're doing people a lot of favors if we're charging $1,500 for one bedroom apartment, but yet we're not, we can't give it away, so there's a balance to all that. And so that's sort of where we find ourselves in the marketplace and we self-manage and we self-perform, so we have a very vertical construction method. And I think I've provided some contacts already to Chief of Police in one of the communities we work in, feel free to contact them, mayor, different banker contacts, we work closely with law enforcement on our properties to make sure that everyone's on the same page. That's a big deal for us too. So that's kind of how we do it.
You led me to a question and if you're not prepared to answer this, that's fine, but I'm just curious, without, if it were to be a true market rate, are we talking $1,500 a unit for one bedroom? Is that kind of what you'd have to be at to make the project viable?
Yeah, it's pretty close to that. And you know what? The other thing is when you're doing development work in any kind of environment, economic environment, there's always risk. And I lived through the Great Recession and came out of it unscathed, but beaten up a little bit, but I stayed on my feet. And so I've seen this movie before, all the stuff going on. We have ability, we have ability to kind of have some protection against the price fluctuations because of the amount of materials we're able to buy through the modular plant. And so there is some buffering, but we just had announcements by the U.S. Department of Commerce, they are increasing the duties on Canadian lumber by 18%. So we're already out of control and now there's 18% duty on top on Canadian softwood. So we're pounding the crap out of our Southern Yellow pine stands and we're not able to get enough lumber and materials from Canada and importing from Russia is another option. That's a whole other deal. So these are all things we have to look at to mitigate risk and we don't know what's going to happen. So it's not only the affordability component, but it gives us a measure of safety, some kind of a margin of safety when we're trying to operate in this environment especially. Having TIP in there helps. You know, if we're raising capital from people that are, you know, putting equity in the deal, they're asking these questions, what are you guys going to do about this stuff? How are you going to make it happen? So at some point, you just can't do it anymore and that's starting to happen already. We're not there yet, but we're watching it very closely.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think those are the same questions we have as well. You know, if I'm looking at this right, it's above, 15% of the project cost would be financed by TIP approximately. Does that sound about right?
It depends upon what we end up with.
Yeah.
There are more eligible TIP expenses in that, but to be clear on this, sometimes developers will take that increment. And by the way, this cost of taxpayers is nothing. It should be very clear that this is not a cost to taxpayers at all. The fees for staff are paid for by us, the risk is taken by us. So we're increasing the value of the property and putting that increment back into the affordability component, stability of the project.
Right.
You know, not just affordability, but making sure everyone understands bankers and those alike, that it's stabilized. So it's pay-as-you-go. So what we're doing is we're saying, okay, this costs us less to operate it, we're not servicing a bond with it, there's no bonding use, there's no leveraging use that way, we're just lowering the cost of operation and therefore lowering the rents and reducing the risk. So that's a fair assessment of what you're saying, but that's how it manifests itself in the project is the reduction of cost.
Fair enough.
So you're building in Lindstrom, the Olinda Trail Apartments?
Correct.
Okay.
We're getting seven to eight calls a day on that property and all we have is an apartments.com ad and a cleared site right now. So people are already signing up for that property and putting money down, we don't even have units on the ground. We're supposed to have a first round of mods set in mid-July and our goal is to be open, by the way, in December of this year. So as soon as we get mods on the ground, we can start showing them, you know, outside of the 3D. That's another big advantage in modular. We're constructing the site, they're installing granite countertops right now and I'll have to send you some of those, I think. But that's the kind of cool part about it is that we can run in parallel like that and compress the timeframe of the project term.
So the city council can have an idea of when you speak about modular, how they're modular placed on the site? If you can look at this. Oh, you know what?
Oh, yeah.
It's a flower.
They have pretty flowers.
That's what Brady just said.
Very pretty.
Thank you, I took that picture myself.
I can tell.
It's in Hawaii.
Oh, good. Mayor, that was brutal.
Just jealous.
You just won't see the presentation. Okay, so this is an example there. Basically brought on this site and just kind of stacked it onto each other. This one does, this particular building doesn't have the underground garage, but...
That's a very basic building and that serves the market that we are currently in. Dry office up in Carlton County, Minnesota, it's a very different system of government. It's a very different economic system than it is here. There are reasons that we have moved out of that area to look at other communities and there are a lot of communities that want and need this type of policy. So yeah, there's a video in there that shows kind of the, we broke ground July 1 and we opened up the doors on, excuse me, August 6th and opened up the doors on January 1. Five months on that one. So you saw how fast the mods went, it's all done in the time lapse. The seasons are about, I'd say anywhere from six to eight weeks shorter up there than it is down here. That is a sandy site, so that made it a little bit easier. I've got 76 units on that campus. When we started out, the first building was only 18 units. It's hard to go out when you do your first apartment building and ask for $5 million in cash, we have no experience. So we've been working on the coal mine for quite a while, this isn't our first rodeo. That's all, City Park back here, this is a soccer field, this whole site is surrounded by City Parks and Spies.
How many different partners in the project?
Well, the managing partners will probably have, I think off the top of my head, five. And that includes Dynamic Homes and includes myself and then the president of Dynamic Homes and then HCI or HCI Real Estate is their parent company. So HCI is Ho'unk Nation and they, just I want to make sure that everyone understands that they are very business oriented, they're very smart and good at what they do. There aren't sovereignty issues with that. I get that question up north a little bit. Every tribe operates differently. They are just like any other business and they have a lot of horsepower. So they are based out of Nebraska and they're the primary owner of Dynamic Homes, which gives them some tax advantages also, which translates to what we're able to do. So it's a really good partnership and they're really engaged and supportive in these projects. And then you have the Equity Group and that's managed by an Equity Fund group of people that we have known for 20 years. They have 200 accredited investors. A lot of them are local, some are down in the Sunbelt. So it's not like this big national group of people. It's a, it's a group that's been built over the last, for this guy, I think, 35 years. And so this last project in Lindstrom, so we had to raise half the equity outside of our closely held group and we raised it in a week. We raised it instantly. So we have to do projects that make sense, otherwise they won't even pay attention to us.
So kind of on that note, it was in the packet or in the info and might have even gone over it a little bit. How firm is this project on doing the 20% of the 50% versus the 40% of the 60?
I've never done 40 of 60 and I think the only reason we haven't done it is because in some of the communities we've worked in, it's really hard to find tenants that meet that qualification. We try to keep the rents the same across the board. We're not lowering rents for somebody that makes less money. We try to be as competitive as possible in rents so anybody can afford it. I think we're under 60% for just about all of them, we're really close on the 50. So it's just, it's easier to administer a project when you have just 20% because you have to do reporting on that and then once somebody's in, they can make up to 140, 1.4 times. So it's not like a tax code deal, I'm not ripping on tax code deals, they're just different. You're not punished for making more money, you're able to live there and if you make more than the 1.4, then you're just not a TIP unit anymore. You move that TIP unit somewhere else and make it available for someone else. So it's a really good system and the 20 at, the 20 at 50 just worked for us. So I guess that's my only explanation to it.
Any other questions?
If there are any other questions, so there's, there are some things that we've listened to feedback on from the council. Just do, does the council support the revised site plan with the single unit and the site plan that Haley included in the packet and do you have any feedback regarding the building height? Good with the amendment to the conditionality amendment?
Yeah.
Does the council support or preliminarily support the use of TIP for this project?
That's a tougher question. Any initial thoughts? I can, I'll start, I'm having trouble looking at that $2.1 million number and just getting comfortable with it. This is the first TIP application we've received since I've been on the city council. And I wasn't expecting one of this level. And when we've talked about it before, it's been on the focus of commercial, so I'm not there yet on this, I'm just, but I'm, that's not, that doesn't have anything to do with the project itself, it's just it's a big ask and it's taken me a minute to get comfortable with it, warm up to it, so. That's where I'm at, to be honest. I wish I was more decisive, but... Amanda, you look like you have so much to say. Bryce, Josh?
Well, keep in mind, the council not being asked to approve it.
I know.
It's just, is this, is there enough there that you want to move it on to the next phase, do a detailed review by Ellers, narrow down what the gap actually is?
Into that, I wouldn't stand in the way of it. Council?
I'm supportive of it looking forward to that phase.
Yeah, I mean, I just think there's such a need, absolutely in the county and the community that, and to the point, I mean, nothing's been approved at this point and more due diligence and just more information gathering will happen at the next phase, so I think it makes sense to keep going.
Do you agree? It's a lively discussion.
Okay, if you do, if that was the next question, if you support the use of TIP, you know, do you support moving it forward, Ellers? And then does the council have any preference for the 20 at 50% versus 40 at 60?
I mean, I was definitely bullish on the 40 at 60, but just because of the need in the community, but I'm also, you know, not going to screw up something either just because that would be my initial preference if it's not going to make it go forward, so.
Dave, is there any capacity to consider the 40 by 60 or?
I think we look at it and drill down a little bit on it and really see if it would be a fit here. We're open to it. And the only, like, as I said, the only reason we haven't done it is because we haven't done it and it seemed to work better the other way, but maybe it's different in this case. So absolutely open to looking at it.
Yeah, I, you know, we're, projects can get messy is when government comes in and gets too involved in what needs to happen in a particular project and this is kind of, this is one of those areas where we kind of need to, we're going to be, we're going to be an investor in the project. I don't know if, I don't know if we should demand one way or another necessarily, and you're not suggesting that we are, but...
No, I still look at both options.
And I'll just double down on what you just said there too. I mean, I think this is, I mean, while there's a massive need, we got to do this right.
Yeah.
And I want to do this right so that there isn't a, see, we told you this was whatever, being thrown back at us and so...
This has to work, it has to be successful.
Right, as much as we can control, obviously.
Given the fact that, you know, as you may continue to move forward and may get to a point of TIP, the building design, is acceptable as to...
I'm fully supportive for him.
And then can I just ask Andrea to speak for a moment regarding what TIP agreement would like to play regarding the basic building design?
Certainly. So the TIP agreement lays out the construction requirements, timing for construction, lays out the requirements for the note that will be issued, provides for all of the statute required TIP requirements related to issuance of the note. It provides for the affordability requirements and requires a declaration to be recorded against the property, it lays out all of those requirements for the affordable components of the declaration and provides for recording requirements and then has their standard events involved associated with that, the very standard.
One of the questions that came up during Haley's presentation during the work session was to what degree can we, through our business relationship with the developer, require or have influenced the management of the property or elements of how they manage the property so that they can guarantee that it's a quality managed project?
I have not worked on one in the past that got into a lot of property management, but I know that there are some communities that have done some more detailed requirements related to property management.
So it is possible we chose to do so?
No, I mean, if it, just to echo on that too, as we move forward, I mean, those would be some of the things to really dive into is the property management side because like Tom said, I mean, that's going to make a break, it could make or break, you know, a thing like this and cause massive headaches for a chief and the crew or just the community in general. So just to make sure that that is as tight and buttoned up as possible so we are full So just to make sure that that is as tight and buttoned up as possible so we are fully eyes wide open to how things are gonna move forward and then we don't have to fix anything after the fact.
No offense to the construction side of it, but thing could be falling down and it's the management that manages the impact to the society that building's in. Number one thing is how it's managed.
Sure. I mean, and I think that's our biggest goal is, I'll speak for myself, my biggest goal would be to, to protect the residents or to let them be able to live in our community as, as great as they can in there, but then also the rest of the residents in the community and it's gonna come down to that management company, organization, structure. So I mean, I'd like to dive into even the breakdown of the different business entities and ownerships and just, I don't know, take a deep dive and experience backgrounds and some of those examples you were talking about would be great and references or whatever to, to kinda compare and just dig on that a little.
I think overall, as a council, we're not opposed to any part of this, if I'm summarizing correctly. We wanna be careful, we wanna make sure that we as a city are doing the best we can to ensure a good, successful project that everyone wins with. We're just moving a little slowly on it, but I, I hope you guys walk away from this as feeling as we are supportive and generally conceptually.
Point as negative as I've been sounding, I fully 100% support this type of thing. I will say that loud and clear that I will support this type of housing in our community because we desperately need it.
Right.
Yes.
Do you need to touch on anything else or?
No, I advance all the questions that we have. There's nothing else you have for us?
We're good.
Thank you.
Switch this again?
Now Brady, I can't yield my time to you tonight, just so you know. Hey.
Darn it.
In fact, I was gonna ask for some of yours.
You can have some. I'm gonna make it so quick.
Basically looking for a blessing from the council to go up for proposal for private services consistent with the previous direction from the council that at least nine, every nine years will go up for needs for court consulting services. Not that we have any specific or strong concerns related to the services that Baker Tilly have provided to us in the past or currently. It's just that we're up against that and we've been annually working through each of those consulting areas and it's just this particular consulting area is timed to go up.
Yeah. Well, we've talked about this for years and, you know, this is kinda just part, part of the process and good due diligence, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a couple of other quick updates to save me writing a link through email tomorrow. One, we held firefighter interviews earlier this week. We didn't go out last year, if you recall, because the school was shut down because of COVID concerns. We had our second largest applicant pool that we ever had and probably one of our most competitive applicant pools that we've ever had. We have three candidates that we are moving on. So if all three of those make it through the process and make it through probation, we will actually be 30 firefighters on the roster pending any potential retirements. So that's the maximum amount that's authorized by the council up to this point. But we do have reasonably, we can expect retirements over the next several years. So we're getting to where we need to be and have those firefighters trained up by the time our most experienced ones start to leave.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
You know, I know in the previous years, that's bad concern of, of a city. Is that concern with this applicant pool, is that concern kinda qualified that?
It is, because even if we had, so right now, we have seven firefighters that are 20 years plus vested, they could punch out right now at, at full vesting. I think a couple of things. One, a lot of those firefighters started at a younger age, so physically they're still able to do it. And two, the pension has actually been growing, as you know, by leaps and bounds in recent years. And so there's an incentive to.
Stick around.
To stick around a little bit, but reasonably, we've got people, I mean, we, our fire chief has been on 30 plus years, our assistant fire chief has been on well over 20 years. And we've got a number of other firefighters. At some point, they're gonna start punching out and that's gonna mean a large vacuum. So we do wanna have these firefighters come on board, but I don't think it's gonna be a mass exodus where we lose a quarter of the fire department. And even if we did, we'd still be close to where we know our staff.
Okay.
Another item, pool in older heights, I think everybody received an email on that. It was requiring a notable amount of maintenance. We contacted the property owner, they have drained the pool or in the process of draining it, they'll be cleaning it up. And they have a, and there was a violation letter sent out this week, so that issue is being addressed. Another item, which may show up on social media or the council may be aware of it, we received a complaint related to a plague on the Windrose neighborhood that involves some profanity. We did contact them and ask them if they would kindly remove it based on the complaints, but it is protected by their first speech rights and the, and the right for it to remain. So just in case you're aware of that, why doesn't the city take care of this? We asked politely, they said no, that's the right to do so.
Best comment of the night. That was quick. I like it.
That wouldn't have worked, that wouldn't have worked this good on Zoom.
Pete's Hill, that project is getting wrapped up from a construction standpoint. There have been a number of issues with the site, some issues between the developer and the general contractor completing all the things that are required. There's also some issues with regards to damage to some of the infrastructure that was installed by, with small utilities came through. We've also had issues with erosion control and so on and so forth. It's required a significant amount of time from staff to not only see that the city's items are addressed, but also to facilitate some of the conversations between other parties, even though it's not technically always our job. We spent a significant amount of time in there this week and probably once next week, but that project is wrapping up really well. And our discussions with the developer, sales are going really well. They were estimating based on the level of sale activity that we may have anywhere from 12 to 20 additional beyond what we have in our permits coming through that development.
The last item I wanted to talk to the council about is council meetings. Two parts to it. One, with the governor's guidance, we should be able to see that normal distances and without masks at the next meeting. Going forward, I wanna make sure the council's okay with that, following that guidance. Is that the case? Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk about is emergency powers. When, associated with that meeting format, as directed, staff did talk to both the planning commission and the parks commission. There was some concerns with going back to in-person meetings before mid-year, but it sounds like everybody kinda recognizes that by July, that's gonna be the thing. And the reason we can meet remotely is the emergency powers. Right now, although it provides us other powers in case of emergency related to posting ordinances, purchasing and those types of things, realistically, at this point in the pandemic, it's staff's opinion that really the biggest benefit it provides for us is providing social distancing at public meetings by holding them virtually. What I'm looking for is, does the council want to, A, move back to in-person meetings in July and should I schedule a discussion later in June related to whether or not we continue our emergency powers?
I have a question. Does CCEC fall into that group?
Yes, because it's a publicly appointed body, a standing body. Yep, correct.
So I, my personal opinion, I don't think there's any need to continue the emergency I realize it puts some constraints on attendance at various different meetings, but, and I'm happy to discuss it, but I just, I don't feel it's needed any longer.
I agree. Absolutely.
I've talked to, I know that, it's my understanding that Lakeville will be considering in June as well. That item and other cities are starting to have those conversations through the end of May and into June. So I think it's gonna become that set of dominoes as vaccinations are increased and normal, and the guidance from the CDC and the governor continue to be relaxed. I think there's gonna be just this general movement back to normalcy, so to speak.
It's kinda nice. We're all here in person meetings without masks. It's, well, for the most part.
I'll quit mine if they make it.
All right, that's all I got.
Thanks, Tom.
If I may, really quick?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
Nope, you can.
The council was supportive of the Benjamin and Gold session at the June 10th meeting, holding it as we had in the past couple of years. And as usual, it will probably take longer than an hour, so we're looking at extending it to an hour and a half. We're interested in getting council feedback on whether it start at 5:30 and go to 7:00 or whether it start at 6:00 and go to 7:30.
I know what Josh is gonna say.
I won't be at that one.
You won't be? All right, let's start it as early as possible. I'm sorry, Amanda, you disagree?
I can't be there.
Does it not work to?
I just have this husband of mine that works until 5 o'clock. He screws up the schedule, but I will just.
Gotta get rid of him.
I need to write.
Man, this is a harsh evening.
I'm good. I have enough time to.
Okay. All right. Sorry, didn't mean to speak too quick. You said you're gonna text him, "I am leaving." You.
Did you wanna write it?
No. All right, cute. Anything for Public Works? Police. Good to see ya.
Glad to be back to my first meeting in about a year, especially since we've had the police department, it's a nicer community. Tom's bringing up some graphics here.
Which one do you want?
This one's.
Option chosen two or three.
And then you can just work it to the side.
Okay.
So since I've come here, I've hated our squad car graphics. A couple of things. One, they look very cheap, they weren't planned well, they didn't fit on our cars, they're cut off at the wheel wells. They're very, very dated. I've been in the business 26 years and they're about 20 years old from where they should have been. A couple of the contributing factors, the use of white in the way that they did and the blue in there, it fades, it doesn't hold its quality and character very long and it just looks dated and old, almost right out of the gate. I noticed within a month and a half, our newest squad car, the white started to fade and just the way it is, it didn't work well in the car. They're very expensive due to the size. There's just a lot wrong with them. So wanted to wait a year or two. We have a brand new car coming online. It's a perfect time to look at the graphics package, modernize them like our city and quite frankly, make them cheaper, better, look better, last longer. So we put to the entire police department, getting total buy-in and stakeholder ship, show us designs, give us ideas, what do we want to do? So we took a month and surveyed all the squad cars in the Twin Cities, looking at modern trends, what people are doing. I wanted to feature Elko New Market. We're the only police department around here. Everyone else is sheriff's department cars, which are white, but all the black cars kinda look the same. So I wanted it to say Elko New Market on it and be more prominent. Another thing, our department, every place we go, every training, any place we're wearing uniform, we get solid comments all the time about our badge. I've been told probably 20 times it's the best looking badge you've ever seen. Bryce can verify that, it's phenomenal. So we wanted to feature that on the car. Elko New Market, the bronze is what people love in the badge, so we wanted to feature that on our car. So we came up with three designs. This is the first one, prominent Elko New Market. The badge is big and featured and then the police is secondary on the bottom, not quite as bold. The second is police is featured bigger, a smaller badge, and then Elko New Market's on the bottom, more prominent in the, the boldness of the font, but yet it was still on there. I didn't want anybody to question what department pulled them over when they come off 35W. No one knows this is Elko New Market. I wanted them to know who was, who they were dealing with. So and then the third one here, this one featured Elko New Market Police. It just makes sense when you say it. It's not police of Elko New Market, it's Elko New Market Police Department. So we came up with these three final renderings. On the back of the car, you'll notice the badge and the license plates is actually a picture of our badge. Our squad graphics company is second to none. They took a high resolution picture of our badge and actually transferred it onto the license plate and onto the car, onto the vinyl graphics. Phenomenal. So those are our three choices that the graphics company gave us, the professional designers. We put them through voting throughout the police department and actually the one featured here is the one that was selected by all the police officers to be featured as our next squad car. The bronze is bold, it sticks out, it's simple, it's modern and it, and it's sleek looking. I've showed it to many of my friends who run other departments. It tests really well, to use a term in the marketing industry. A huge thing about it, and probably my favorite, is to graphics all three cars like this is the same price as one of our old graphics packages.
Even better.
Even better.
So that allows us to renew a whole carling at one time rather than doing it over time.
Well, I drive a black SUV and I was wondering if I could get added in.
I will get you the price and, oh wait, you gotta be a police officer. Sorry about that. So another thing is not having piecemeal and two different looking cars when they show up to the scene. So it allows us to strip the graphics off the current car, graphics all three cars for a little more than what it would have been to just graphic one car. And it boils down to the amount of vinyl in this graphics package on two of the cars is the same on one of the other one. Also, the large sheets on the other graphic, it takes more labor to put them on. So this'll last longer, look nicer. If something happens to one of the letters, they can simply swap it out. With the other graphics package, they had to swap the whole thing out. So it makes it, it's just a win-win-win. So I'm just looking for, you guys like it and we can go ahead and have them made and get them on the cars. We're hoping to have it on. If you guys give it the blessing to have them made and it's gonna go on the brand new car that's gonna be built, and then we're gonna swap the other two cars out.
You'd be an awesome car salesman.
Thank you. Well, it is a.
Now you got your retirement gig.
Yeah. I actually love selling cars. I think that'd be great. But I just think it, it symbolizes our city. It, it's a great looking, it's sleek, it's modern, and I think on the parade coming up on the 26th, we hope to have it, this new graphic on the car, so.
I was wondering, I was gonna ask when you were ready.
Yep, we're, if you guys give it the okay, I tell her tomorrow and we schedule it and get them made.
Anyone opposed? Let's go for it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I really liked the lighting package, by the way.
The lighting package?
On the, on the car, it looks nice.
There's a lot of lights on there. I don't know, it's kinda all in the grill, it's all over the place. Oh, our current, our newest squad, oh my gosh, it's a, it's incredible lighting package. We actually have to turn it down at night so it doesn't hurt people's eyes.
Yeah. Hurts my eyes when I'm driven by it.
You're driven by or what?
No, no, no.
So you can't see it from the. So you can't see it from the backseat, right? Chief, oh, thank you for actually asking to be requested for some of your time.
You may have it as long as you'd like my car.
Assuming there's no fire, no further fire.
Next slide, Tom. So we're right here, and Wild Wings Development is down in this area, and the sewer collects to this point. I've traced out the green line, their current sewer route, right across from City Hall is the part we'll be talking about, turns, goes under 2 and into a lift station by City Hall. That was installed in around 2000, 2001, something like that, actually before I started here. Next slide. We're going to be focused tonight on the spot across from City Hall. In 2005, we had to relay that segment during construction of County Road 2. I checked the plans for County Road 2, and it actually only called for adjusting these manholes. Tom and I were trying to remember why we relayed this, and all I can think of is they did widen the road, they changed the grade, made it higher, and all that fill caused a slope failure that may have come to our attention, and we must have done a hurry-up and relayed it. During that relaying, we changed it from an 8-inch pipe to a 12-inch pipe because we weren't sure what was going to happen with the soils, if it was going to keep moving. So 12 inches should give us a little more buffer, a little more capacity in case something changed. Well, now things have changed. I mentioned the oversizing. We also started at that time to just take shots every couple of years or every so often on top of the manholes to see if things were moving. And indeed, they were. So starting in 2006, we went, in two years, we found that the middle manhole went down a little over half a foot, and the other ones appeared to stay stable. Then in 2008, it appeared to be stable. Later that summer, still stable, August, still pretty much stable. And then we kind of let it go for about 10 years. I don't recall if we got a report from Cory concerned about something or what, but we went back out and shot it and found that in that 10-year period, it had actually gone down about one foot in the middle manhole, and actually, the one straight across from City Hall went up.
And, and you recall, for those of you that are living in the community at the time, when they redid the road right out in front of City Hall, just slightly up the hill towards the senior housing building, that whole chunk of road sank like this far.
You can walk out there right now and see that moon-shaped crack, it's still, still showing up.
They added pavement on it twice to rebuild it back up, and so that sloughing, that's just happening up there, but that's having an effect, it's just pushing, everything's shifting and everything's dropping.
For the past three years, it appears to be stable. Just a point of information, next slide. So the problem that creates is, we originally built these blue manholes with a nice straight pipe generally going downhill from one to the next, turning the corner, going onto the road. That's what we wanted to see. What we have since then are these orange manholes that have moved one up, one down, meaning the pipe connecting them has to do something. I don't know if it's exactly like this, but there's certainly a lower pipe here and a higher pipe there. And what that means is this blue line is dead level, means there's water sitting in that pipe at all times, which would be just fine if it was just water, but probably other stuff in there. That stuff tends to collect in the low point, and if there's not a lot of velocity of water moving through, it'll sit there and accumulate. The, the other problem is not just sinking things, but floating things, so fats, oils, greases normally will float on the top and make it to the lift station, get pumped out, but if they get too high, they start to catch on, on things and build up. So, if we do not, and we have had to clean this, and Cory could tell you more about that if he was here, but trust me, it's not a very fun job.
Oh, just, I can talk about the most recent incident.
Sure.
So, the city administrator's nose was smelling sewage along here, and while I was helping a neighboring resident retrieve her keys that had fallen down in her stoop, I walked past the manhole down there and noticed that there was sewage coming out of the manhole, and that was the point of it. Public Works quickly responded, and they had just, we normally have a 5-E rotation on our cleaning, and we normally clean this section every year just because of the risks Rich was talking about, and had just done it six months ago, and we came through and they jetted that section. There was three blockages between the lift station down here, all the way up to Wild Wings, and there were logs of grease coming out of the, like, eight inches around, this long, coming out of the pipe.
It's not like you're digging grease down the same place.
Yep. So, that type of blockage over that short a period of time is something we haven't seen before, continued with this, so that, that's what we're risking, and it was backed up well up the, well up the pipe.
I think they got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the risk of doing nothing, if you've ever had a leak in your house or some problem that makes a noise in your car, and then you get it fixed, you are going to be extra in tuned to that same problem recurring again. We have that. I mean, Cory is now worried that he's got to check on this weekly to make sure there's not a backup happening, because if it does unexpectedly clog up, it can either lead to raw wastewater flowing into the wetland, which we don't want, or worse, backing up into these people's basements. So that's not guaranteed to happen, but, but it could, so it's something that we worry about. And even worse than that would be if things would, didn't move for 10 years and then ooh, if that happens again and it comes apart, because there's a limit to how much those pipes, they just stick together, you don't balance dig it, they could be pulling apart. If it comes apart underground, now you've got this problem, but you also have to figure out how to provide temporary service to solve that problem, find someone to come and dig it up and fix it all in a big hurry, and that's probably going to happen in February. So that's a concern.
Is that a prediction?
It is. It's a likely, certainly a likely. We have identified more than three solutions. We kicked out most of them because they just weren't practical, but we could just relay it again. That's probably the cheapest and easiest. Put once bitten, twice shy. Are those soils still moving? Even if they're not, there's a big crack out in that road, we can drive over it, but if it gets worse, the county's going to have to come and fix it. If they choose a robust enough fix, is our pipe even going to be in the way where we got to move it anyway? Or do something with the manholes? Or they fix it and put more dirt on it, and it's, you know, so I'm just not crazy about leaving it in that location, given the history of that in only 16 years. We could change the pipe to a pressure pipe, we've got a conduit this big, we could shove a smaller pipe through it, put a pump station on one end and just pump it through, because then it don't care if it's moving up, down, sideways, as long as it hangs together, which it would, because it's a more robust connection. Probably wouldn't have to worry about it, but we need to put in and operate and maintain a lift station, they are expensive, and it still may be in the way of some future roadway fixes, which I just can't predict what, what they might ever do. The third option, if it's feasible, which I'm hoping it would be, we can move the pipe away from the soils by realigning it out in the wetland. I may have forgotten, did I put graphics for that? No, I didn't. Just saved you 20 minutes. We would basically relay the pipe through the wetland, put a manhole by the back of the baseball field, and then come and tie into the manhole. We'd have to reset the one that moved, but that would move that pipe well out away from the road, where it's flat ground, there's no, no moving soil. So when I say if, the two problems we have is, is there something under the wetland to actually lay the pipe on? We've got 30 feet a month, that's probably not going to work, but if there's four feet and then decent soil, we can probably make that work, and then figuring out, do we build it in winter when things are frozen? Can it be dewatered? So we do want to confer with some of our local contractors to just get some feedback on how we might be able to construct it. We would have to get easements, but it's really land that's not used for anything else. It is permissible to place utilities, a temporary impact for, to wetlands for utilities. So I think that's worth checking out. It's a little more distance, it might be a little more costly than relaying it, but I think if it's put well away from the road, it's going to be less to worry about. And so that's our recommendation. We'd like to further vet the realignment option, get some soil borings to see how deep the wetland soils are, talk to a couple contractors, and then get the landowners up to speed and see if there's any strong negative reactions to this. Schedule, we'd be looking to try to get this ready so it could be built, winter of 2021, '22. That means we want to do these tasks ASAP, and after we get this info, we'll come back and see if we want to keep going that direction or change course.
Sounds really expensive.
It's probably, probably a brand-new Lexus, something like that.
Really? It's not that bad?
It's not that bad. I figured it'd be a lot more expensive.
It really depends what we find when we go take some just borings.
So the second option is expensive.
The second option is digging, they're, well, the second option, yeah, that one's...
Or a lift station?
That's more of a Lamborghini.
Yeah. I figure the most expensive one would be Lamborghini.
The lift station, yeah, we, we...
Well, the minutes reflect the cost analysis. Rich said it's going to cost a Lamborghini.
I don't know if you understand.
Give me a model Lamborghini, because there's a big variation.
When you start talking lift stations, you're in the hundreds of thousands, I think. The other two were probably something on the lower side of 100. I don't know exactly, but it really depends what we're... Next slide. Oh, I guess we're in.
So I heard, well, I heard a bunch of things, but one of the things I heard was County Road and the crack, is there any involvement with the county to participate in this fix?
We are there by permit. If they came along and said, "Hold your sewer, we're going to widen the road," we'd be moving the sewer. So, if they wouldn't, I mean, they're, they're good, but no, I don't think so.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
It's my neighborhood, I need you to fix the motor. First slide.
Hold these up stairs.
Lot.
Yes.
They're up there.
I guess the ask is that, to further vet this option, right? That's going to work out.
I think so. I think the, the one I'm suggesting we look at is maybe a little bit more, just because it's a little more distance, but I, I just like the idea, get away from that road. If the county don't know what's going on with the soils, then I don't, it's just, it's too unpredictable.
Yeah. I'm fine.
Doesn't make sense.
All right.
I signed a PSA out about the baking roofs.
Oh, that was a joke too. Everybody knows that already.
One would like.
All right. New development?
Thanks, Rich.
Updates, but I have been thinking about a couple comments that I've gotten recently from, you know, we work very commonly with developers within the community or businesses within the community. Commercial developer that I've been talking back and forth with for the last few weeks said, "I would be interested, but Elko New Market needs more households in the amount of about 250 more housing units, and then we become unmarketable, want to pass that along." And then we have another business that's very interested in the community, but at this point, their only hesitation is being able to find workers in the service industry, so that's disappointing, but still working on. Any questions for community members?
Thanks for naming. Parks, any further update on Parks?
Yep.
CCEC.
I missed the last meeting, which was Fire Rescue Day Planning Meeting.
Don't blame your husband.
He's the problem.
All right.
Linda, do you have anything to?
No.
I mean, the minutes are in the packet.
Minutes are included, and we just went through the fire rescue assignments.
You don't, okay, so I'm lying because I have a question. Is the council in the parade every year?
Yes.
I don't know why, I mean, I'm at the parade every year, I don't know why.
Thanks for noticing.
Pay enough attention, but...
They have the best candy.
Yeah, usually families, kids, and all that.
Oh, the whole thing.
It's a blast.
Okay, sounds good.
And based on consideration, we make sure the council is the best stock candy client to go in the parade.
Excellent.
My wife hates it, and she has to go every year.
Her and Jake are going to get along just fine.
I apparently will drive much faster this year.
Oh.
Thanks. Got a lot of flack driving to this level.
The grand marshal this year is going to be Mike Koppinger, has a long, long, long time family business in town that's just recently closed, and Mike is also a longtime member of the fire department. He was selected by the committee to be the grand marshal this year, and he apparently just won out, he's accepted, so.
Okay. Other committee reports, scale, no real update, scale meetings in a couple weeks, executive meeting is next week. Service delivery?
In about three weeks.
I, I don't think there's been any communication that's gone out in a long time on the Unified Transit Plan Steering Committee, so we'll move to MDTA.
Does that have an own report?
I-35.
A report.
No one here from the Chamber of Commerce? Unless Bryce, you want to get anything you want to share? No?
Got nothing.
On to discussion by council. If no one has anything.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, maybe, or second by Bryce, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.